Welcome to today's Southwoods Zone Town Hall meeting. It is Tuesday, July 21st. Today, we are talking Masters Water Polo. We have a bunch of athletes, coaches and club admins from some of the Masters teams from around the state in the zone. And this is going to be panel, a panel style discussion. So I'm going to go around the group and ask you and ask some questions and people are going to ask back and forth. They're, they're going to ask each other some questions. They're going to ask me some questions. Please feel free and kind of just please, please feel free to share. If you are just watching, please make sure if you want to ask, please use the Q and A feature and I'll make sure your question gets asked. All right, so now I'm just going to go through and just kind of mention a panelist and then each panelist is going to go through and talk about what club they're with. And, um, and kind of, and kind of where their club is and kind of what their role is and kind of what their role in general in water polo world is. So let's start with Robert Albeck.
Thanks Joe. Robert Albeck, I'm Austin Water Polo Club, Club Admin, Coach, Player, Referee, Zone Rep for the Austin area, Zone Chair. And I'm also the one of two Masters National Committee members that is not living in California.
All right, Becca.
I'm Becca Andrew. I'm here with my husband, Tom. We live in Austin. So I run the Wahoos Women's Team. So we're affiliated with Longhorn Aquatics. So, um, Club Admin for the Wahoos. And then I help out with coaching the UT Women's Team and our high school Longhorn Aquatics athletes here and there as a volunteer coach. So pretty much always at the UT pool during normal times.
All right, Tom in the mustache.
Tom Andrew, also in Austin and the head admin and coach at Longhorn Aquatics Water Polo. Also a player or athlete for Totex Water Polo, which was transitioning to being Longhorn Masters. As, but that's, you know, kind of been put on hold. We'll see how that goes. What else do I do? Kind of help everything get run at UT pretty much. I have the UT men and women's teams, I have the Wahoos out. And yeah.
Gabriel.
Gabriel Best with the Alamo Masters Water Polo Club here in San Antonio. We've been gone now for about 10 years or so. And I am the head coach and, and I try to get into water every now and then. I won't consider myself a player like Tom or Becca, of course. They're a different level than I am, but I enjoy the sport and adore coaching it. And we will stand up a men's team hopefully pretty soon, but predominantly we've been a women's team. With no, very little youth participation. We're in fact a Masters Club.
All right, Luis.
Luis Brothers, Hops Water Polo. I do all the digital footprints for the club. So Instagram, Facebook. Been with Hops about nine years or so. Been in water polo in Houston area probably 20 years. Done some coaching and things like that, but mainly just doing Hops now.
All right, Arseni.
Arseni Girkowski, Hops, been here about a year. I'm the CFO and I guess legal counsel. Before that, I was the founding, one of the founding members of Totex. Like I said, been Houston about a year before that was in Austin for about six.
Okay, Ashley.
Ashley Hatcher, based out of Dallas, Texas, playing with Dallas Masters Water Polo and on the board for that club and coaching for Pegasus Water Polo, Youth Water Polo Academy. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Well, again, I appreciate all of you coming in today. Now we're just going to ask, I'm just going to go around and everybody, these are just some quick little questions. How is your club doing with COVID and are y'all practicing? Are y'all doing any get togethers? Is it Zoom? Is it in person? Just curious. So we'll just go around real quick. How about you Gabriel?
We had one Zoom meeting and we've been on a phone together with different members, but not as a whole, as a team. And so we do keep in touch. Those of us who work together, see one another and, and visit every now and then. We haven't had any training or workouts or meetups physically anyway. So that's what's been going on. We've been trying to support and encourage one another to be safe and, and, and just, just remain hopeful that it will be resolved soon and we can get back in the water. I know individually, we're getting in the water, but not as a team.
How about you Luis and Arseni, you are both from Hops, so.
So we have had the opportunity to hold practices. We managed that by sending out a survey to everybody in the club and, you know, everybody just, you know, level of comfort as to what to do. Not pushing anybody to do anything in particular, but just, you know, some people have just come out and swam or passed or shot. We've had opportunities to do both scrimmages and it's all just kind of based on what the responses were on our different surveys that we've been doing.
How about you Ashley?
So as of, since the beginning of June, we started practicing just, we have an hour full time a week, but pretty much just conditioning, passing and shooting. So Masters favorite.
Just an hour? So that's all the stuff that Masters people don't like to do. They just want to scrimmage. What about you guys, Becca, Tom?
We've been focused more on our youth club during this time. So we're running dry land workouts Monday through Friday at five o'clock every day. So I'm, I'm with Ally Hill with the girls Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And we've invited the Masters ladies to join. Turns out they don't want to do dry land workouts at five o'clock three days a week. So haven't had much, you know, popularity doing that. But yeah, we haven't been able to get back in the water at all. We've had some, you know, backyard distance happy hours and we keep in touch. We're kind of there for each other, but we're not unfortunately able to play anytime soon.
Yeah, the, uh, the pools briefly opened, the city pool is briefly open and we had a spreadsheets, you know, for people that want to sign up and go swim together. So we had a few athletes do that, but we haven't been able to hold anything organized practice wise. So everybody's kind of working out on their own at the moment.
All right, Robert, so what about you guys?
Well, same pool situation throughout Austin here. So some of us would get together in Summit Barton Springs, a couple of us would get together and swim below the dam. But that's really about it. No ball, no formal organized water polo, other than just, hey, let's meet some learned dudes in swimming.
Good. So now we're just going to talk about a little bit about best practices. And I mean, everybody's a little bit different on how they do things. And I'm just curious, how do your club run? Is kind of what type of business structure does it have? Do y'all have a, like an athlete board that kind of runs it and that has like to say so? Is it nonprofit? Is it just a bank account? Is it, or what have you? So I'm just going to go around the group. How about you Ashley?
So we are a nonprofit. We have paid coaches and we do have a board of, I want to say four or five of us. That kind of trying to structure the team and also planning for tournaments and things like that.
Now that's, that is, that is part, that is separate than the Pegasus board, correct?
That's right.
Masters players?
Yes.
And that is, y'all, how, how's that transition kind of happened between George, Frank and you guys? Has it been seamless?
Yeah, yeah, they're still pretty, pretty involved, or at least pre-COVID they were. But they did want to kind of set up something formal so that they could kind of set themselves up to, to be able to hand it off. But we haven't obviously had that much to do since then, so.
How about you Robert with Austin?
We're 501(c)(3). There's about three of us that are actual officers. And primarily myself, we've got one paid coach who's primarily for the, for the kids though. But on the master's side, it's a fairly egalitarian group. Just get folks together. Someone will say, hey, I want to go to somewhere and let's set something up.
So, so you're saying it's kind of a dictatorship, huh Robert?
No, because you can't, you can't, you can't make Masters athletes do anything. If they want to do it, they'll do it. You can dictate all you want. It won't make a difference.
All right, Arseni and Luis.
So we have a board and a, and a bank account. Working on getting a nonprofit set up.
You have a bank account that actually says Hops Water Polo on it?
We're getting there.
Okay, okay. All right. So do y'all have a board like of, like of athletes that can help kind of decide some stuff?
Yeah, we have a board of five.
Okay, well, good, well, good, good. How about you Gabriel?
We're also a nonprofit organization and we do have a board as well. It's made up of, well, at one point it was all females. And then once I came on board and, and we brought some other men on board as well, we diversified it just a little bit. But a core group of people that have been together from the very beginning. We do have meetings, elections every, every year and whatnot. And so rotate through. They, we get together as friends and adults and talk and listen to one another. So decisions are made collaboratively as we plan out the year. And, and when we face challenges, we come together and we talk about it and, and we make decisions that way.
Okay. How about you guys, Becca, Tom?
So Totex is originally just kind of a group of a few A&amp;M guys and a few UT guys. And so it wasn't, you know, all let's group up and go to tournaments. And then it kind of morphed into mostly UT guys plus Arseni's black book of like contacts of people, you know, around the country that go to tournaments. But yeah, there wasn't even a bank account or anything. It was just, all right, everybody pay this one person for this tournament and he'll pay the entry fee, that kind of thing. But like I mentioned earlier, we're kind of transitioning to now pretty much everybody that plays for, for Totex practices at UT through Longhorn. Like that'd be a long membership. It made more sense for me to have to explain to new people moving to town that were actually just like, instead of explaining what Totex was, what Austin Water Polo is and what Longhorn is, just like, all right, we're going to be Longhorn. So we started off, started that off just last spring.
Yeah, I guess we're pretty similar. I think Robert knows more of the women's Austin Water Polo history than, than I do. I know there has been a women's team for a long time, just kind of changed the, you know, number of, of ladies that were coming out to scrimmage and everything. But I got here in 2014 and we kind of had a surge and, you know, ladies who wanted to play go, started going to more tournaments as a, as an actual team. Do not have a board, I feel like we should, according to everyone else on this call. We're super unorganized. Really lucky that everyone on my team is very go with the flow and just is fine with, you know, signing up for a tournament the month before. And, but you know, in the future, it's, it's really good to hear how other people are doing it. Maybe we'll get a little bit more.
And I, I joke around with Robert about the, about the dictatorship, but if you have a, if you actually have like a board, it's sometimes difficult to just get people to be on a board call or a board meeting and actually do something that they're supposed to do.
I don't think anybody would want to be on a board on my team. I think we pretty much have an unofficial board because there's like.
Show up to practice and just tell me what the tournament is, so.
More of us that always turn up and we pretty much make the decision. So we've got a board.
Okay, it's a board of two, yeah, right there. So, all right, so now just kind of, kind of, you know, pre-COVID and stuff like that. Just kind of real quick hit, real quick. How often do you guys practice? Is it weekdays? Is it weekends? About how many people, yeah, do you get out for your practices? Just real quick, let's go Gabriel.
All right. So prior to COVID-19, we were practicing once a week. And, and at one point we were practicing twice a week. If I go back about a year or so, we were in the water in the mornings and starting around five o'clock in the morning, we would practice between five and, five and six o'clock. And we would do that three times a week with, with get together on the weekend, either a Saturday or a Sunday, primarily a Sunday. And so we've scaled that back, say within the last year or so, down to one or two practices a week. And that's about it.
Arseni and Luis in Hops.
So we've been doing two days a week, two or three days a week. We do every Monday, every Wednesday, every other Sunday. We've obviously not been doing that lately. We just kind of get time in on the weekends now, but, but pre-COVID, it was two or three times a week. We have system, we have 15 at least. We use this software called Teemer and we'll send out notifications to everybody that's on the club. And they'll say whether they want to show up or not. And that, that way we'll know how many people we have. And then we'll need to know, to notify the pool if we're coming or not. And we also cancel all these people weather sometimes because we have an outdoor pool. But pretty consistently two or three times a week.
So what's that, what's that app that you guys use?
Excuse me?
What's that app?
Teemer. Oh, Teemer, yeah.
Okay, Teemer.
Teemer, yeah.
How about you guys Ashley?
So we, we schedule, well, we practice pre-COVID on Tuesday nights and Sundays. Tuesdays probably get anywhere from eight to 10 people. And then on Sundays, particularly in the summer, when it's outdoors, we could have as many as like 25 people because we have a lot of the kids, a lot of the high schoolers play, that can play up and people coming back from college and stuff like that. So really just depends on the time of the year, pre-Austin tournament. You're going to get high attendance.
Or pre any tournament.
Spin lob, it really, it really tapers off. But yeah, we pretty much just have a WhatsApp group. So we'll kind of say, you know, try to figure out how many people are going so we can kind of plan accordingly.
How about you guys Robert?
So we're very seasonal. Things are varying according to pool availability. So the busy happy time normally is summer. So May through the end of September, we've got a pool the city provides. And we'll have anywhere, oh goodness, we'll have three squads. So I think the high number would be like 28 people or so. That I've shown, we actually have a whole bunch of people that drive up from San Antonio and scrimmage. So Saturdays, some summers are very happy. Weekdays, we're typically practicing at Longhorns. And then that's what's, that's the primary pool source during that time. So folks are signing up with Longhorn there and/or going up to Round Rock and playing with Aquatex on, on Saturdays. So it's a fairly kind of gypsy, free flowing situation there. But Saturdays are the happy days and in the summer, and unfortunately we're not there. And we even have people from Houston come up with some frequency actually to come scrimmage. So Dallas, we're missing you guys.
It's a long drive.
Whenever you want to come down to Austin and have some fun, just know that Saturday mornings normally, we would welcome you guys with loving arms.
Free flowing is a perfect example or is a perfect description of Masters Water Polo right there. So Becca, Tom.
So we normally have a women's scrimmage once a week, which we set up a few years ago. And it's not just Masters. We'll have high school girls and then also the UT ladies as well. So it's like Monday or Tuesday, we'll have an hour and a half, like just women. So that's been really good and it's helped out our younger athletes as well to have some bit more competition for the ones who have been playing for a few years already. So that's been good. And then, so we'll do that. And then we'll have like a coed scrimmage with whoever wants to play with us on Thursdays. And then Saturdays, it's either Round Rock or what Robert was saying in the summertime Northwest Pool, which is definitely the highlight of water polo, at least for the women's team. I think they like that more than spin logs.
Okay, well, there you go.
Yeah, to go on that a little bit, so there's so many groups in the pool. We all kind of share the same time, like eight to 10 PM during the week at UT. Depending on where the UT teams are in their season, we'll scrimmage with the UT guys, the UT women will scrimmage with the Wahoos. And we can have anywhere from, you know, three or four people show up to 20 people, like five people show up. And unfortunately, it's kind of cyclical that everybody shows up at the beginning of the fall and there's, you know, 20 or 30 people there. And you get to play for two minutes and sit out for 10 minutes and then nobody shows up. So next week we have like three people show up. But so, because they're all mad they didn't get to play last time. It's really kind of hard to manage. And sometimes we set up two scrimmages, we'll set up and, but we can't really call it like an A and a B scrimmage. Because nobody wants to play in the B scrimmage, so we have to be crafty with that. And, and yeah, like the women, they'll, when they're playing with the high school girls, they're mostly coaching and teaching. And if they wanted to like play like a competitive game, they'll play with, with us. And so.
It's really, it's pretty frustrating. I mean, it's good. It's good to be in the water, but a lot of times we have to choose whether we're going to be teaching high school girls, like the one night a week that we're going to make it out to practice. Or are we going to be able to have a higher level scrimmage? And a lot of that depends on what the, what the guys want to do and how many of the guys turn up. Because it's kind of a delicate balance there.
So Ashley, do you guys have the same type of issue on those Sunday practices for Dallas?
No, not really. Recently it's been mostly just me.
Well, I mean, I mean, is that pre-COVID? Is that pre-COVID?
We don't, yeah, I think that we don't have as many women present at the practices probably. So it's not as much of an issue. I think if we, we have had it probably a couple of years ago where a couple more women came and then they get frustrated, but we don't really quite have enough to have a really strong independent women's team. So yeah, kind of a non-issue now.
Well, just, just kind of one last kind of little business, like business best practices thing. Just, I know sometimes the hardest thing is collect dues from Masters players. This is always hard. It's always difficult. There, and these are people that can readily afford everything, but they just choose not to pay for, for whatever reason. And then they just, just kind of tell me an amount. So I'm just curious, is it seasonal? Is it monthly? Is it annual dues? And then how do you collect your dues as well? Just real quick. Arseni and Luis.
Okay. So we collect these three times a year. We have three seasons, it's broken down that way. If you do the first two seasons, you get a price break for the whole year instead of paying it each season. We usually get them on top of people pretty early on it. You know, we make sure we have some reserves in the bank or our PayPal account, however you want to do it. You know, to make sure that we can start the year without having to collect dues. But we have a pretty good number of players. I mean, we have a lot of members. So we're able to actually kick people out if they're not paying. So that threat is, you know, something that we luckily have that is able to get us to collect dues. And we will ask people to leave. I mean, even now and during this time, and we make sure everybody's USA Water Polo, you sign your COVID waiver, you pay dues. You know, if you're dropping in, you have your drop-in fee. I mean, we're, we're on top of that stuff pretty, pretty well, I think.
You mind me asking kind of what do you charge for your seasonal dues?
I think it's 200, I, I, I think as a CFO, I think it's like 200 a season. And if you do the full year, it's like 475, I want to say, something like that. That sound right?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
That's a, that's not that expensive actually. So there you go. How about you guys Ashley?
Sorry about that. I would say we're pretty, a little bit different, but pretty similar overall in terms of total fees. So we actually, we used to just kind of hunt people down. But I think.
I remember George on the pool deck saying, you can't get in unless you pay. So go ahead, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, that was kind of a mess. I think last fall, maybe we moved to just automatic draft. And so you just get billed every month 40 bucks. So how it works, yeah. Comes out to 40 a year, so pretty similar overall. But yeah, a lot, a lot easier than trying to track people down.
How about you Robert?
So we've got really just the one season that I hit people up for. So I mean, there's, there's two, you know, monetary events. There's the per event as in spin lob and/or whatever tournament does that play there. And that's the usual, what's the cost? How many people are going to attend? And then, you know, do some simple division. That's fairly easy. The other one is the, the summer season. So that is typically about 130, I think is normally what I ask. It varies a little bit according to the cost structure we get from the city. How do I do that? I just basically stand by and remind people as they come up. So then we'll also have drop-in fees. So a lot of the folks from San Antonio typically, when they drive up, they'll just pay, pay drop-in fees. And honestly, it's not that big a problem. I mean, and also I know most of the folks, if they're having maybe some financial challenges or something, then, you know, we can work out something where it gets paid over time, so.
How about you guys, Tom, Becca?
So this is actually kind of easy for us since we're at UT. They can't get past the front desk unless they have an active membership. So they have to pay monthly. And I think I was looking that up just now. They, they keep bumping up on me every year. I think it's either 60 or $70 a month, something like that. And that's for two to three practices, depending on what events are going on. And we can build our accounts directly for tournaments as well. So it's pretty easy to collect.
And how about you guys Gabriel?
We've gone through several iterations of how we're going to do, collect dues. And it's been a struggle. As a head coach, I try to stay out of it as much as possible, but every now and then it is, we are a nonprofit. Let's start off with that and let you know that, you know, our heart goes out to everyone that, that wants to play water polo, wants to be in the water and that sort of thing. And so we talk to people, we work with them, we try to meet them halfway, that sort of thing. But at one point or another, you know, we've had, we've had to have meetings to indicate that we can't pay for the pool. Because we don't have enough dues coming in, you know? And, and so we had to make an adjustment from there. And like I said, the, with, you know, with these discussions, we put it to a vote and we make a decision, we come up with a decision as to what we're going to do going forward. We have individuals who do donate to our team because we're a nonprofit. And so that does help out a bit as well. But for the most part, we do, at this point anyway, we're doing a $7 drop-in for everyone and move away from the monthly, from the monthly dues.
All right, well, I, I do appreciate the guys. That was, that was good. And I hope we, that was just kind of, kind of sharing best practices back and forth. Now I want to get into some of the more, just kind of the like questions that we can go off topic on, or we can have a little bit of conversation mode here. Again, please feel free to share or, or kind of not answer. I'm just going to leave it up to the group and, and once I ask a question, please, please be free to just talk. All right. So the first one is thoughts on the spin lob tournament in this past February. Spin lobs been around for a long time. Arseni and Tom are two of the people that started it obviously. And I think Robert's been, yeah, has been playing, has been part of it for a long, long time too. And I think Luis has played in it in almost every single one. And I think Ashley, I think your team won the last two years. So, um, so I'm just curious, how was the spin lob? Because this was the first year that the Southwoods Zone took over the spin lob kind of control of it. So I'm just, I'm just going to throw it out there. So how was the spin lob this past February? Good, bad, or others?
Good.
I, yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's always a tournament that everybody looks forward to in the region. And I feel like at least on our team, that's probably the tournament people most look forward to. It's, it's a high quality tournament. You know, it feels very worth your while, worth actually swimming ahead of time. And I think personally on the girl's side, there were some concerns two years ago in terms of equity of schedule and placement of games. The women's games were mostly in the well. I knew women's teams that were playing at nine PM game and a six AM game and things like that. But we raised all of those, myself and a few others, I want to say beginning of last year. And I feel like there was definitely a big switch between. And I feel like there was definitely a big switch between two years ago and this year's or last year. So um, for me, it was a much better experience.
Anybody else?
That's Robert. I mean, I'll just mention, um, we actually, on the Masters National Committee, we actually talk about spin lob as like one of these events that we just need to make sure is planned around. Because every now and then, hey, we're thinking about you doing something here and there. And there'll actually be several people other than myself on the committee that'll say, well, let's make sure it doesn't conflict with, with, uh, with spin lob. So that's, uh, that's a nice thing to see. Um, so I think people recognize that it's a fun event and, um, it's, it's worth the travel.
And I mean, it, the Southwood Zone did do some work this year, but it's still a lot of the work is Arseni and Tom behind the scenes. We wouldn't have as nearly as, as many teams, yeah, without both of them kind of being part of it. And they're the ones that grew this tournament from year one to what it is now. This past year, I think we had 20 men's teams and 10 women's teams, all masters. There's no kids. And I think everybody loves that. And it has a laid back feel. And I mean, just kind of kudos to you, Arseni and Tom. And, um, and I'm glad that you kind of entrusted the Southwood Zone to kind of take care of, like, kind of take care of your event. So.
Yeah, man, I think you did a, you did an awesome job, Joe. I think like the transition was, uh, was, uh, seamless in terms of like running that tournament. I think it went really well this year.
That's not what I was going for with this question. So there you go. But, um, but I do appreciate that. I mean, is there anything that we can do to improve it kind of moving forward? Thoughts, guys? Because we can always keep improving. So.
I mean, in terms of teams, I think we're like, uh, we're basically, I think we're kind of capped out. I think we had turned teams away just because we didn't have enough pool space. We're using all three pools and we're kind of capped out. You know, we, we had this conversation during the, uh, like a planning meeting and, uh, and we're like, we had this, this other team that, or some teams entered and then they never sent in their entry fee. And then they're like, oh, oh, we're still coming. And then we had to like e- expand the tournament. I think we expanded it to like the maximum potential, uh, you know, in terms of the quantity of teams. Um, I thought the refereeing was good. There were some of the big name folks I also wanted to bring in, but, but I guess they were busy this year, like some of the big name referees.
Then we'll try to keep improving that as we go. And as far as pool space is concerned, is that outdoor pool done yet at UT? Tom, Becca?
Yeah, I was gonna jump in there. Uh, theoretically, we have more capacity now because there's a 50-meter outdoor pool that should be finished.
I went past it the other day.
Yeah, they should be putting water in pretty soon. So assuming we ever get to get back on campus, then we should be able to use that pool. And I think we can run at least one course in there. It's kind of a weird shape. It's 15 meters, going only five lanes wide. And then there's like a T section in the middle of it. And I don't know how deep it is. I have to check how deep it is. It might only be five, six feet deep.
But that's not necessarily necessary for us to maybe use. But that, but that, that might mean the swim teams can go outside and train. And we can maybe even start earlier on Saturday.
Yeah, that's true. There will be more water space available, yeah, in the indoor pool. So.
So when's that going to be done?
Any day now. I mean, it's done. They just have to fill it up. And there's some issues with concrete. I think they figured that out. So, you know.
Potentially, potential, potentially in February?
I mean, it should 100% be done by then. We're supposed to be using it in the fall. If we actually get to go to the pool. So.
Sweet.
Yeah, I think it's a challenge.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Ashley.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say probably, I mean, they're just hard things to solve for, right? But, um, I know a lot of the masters teams struggle. The game's just so different when you're playing in the well versus in the, the main pool. It, it's a totally different game, which, um, will be, is advantageous to some teams, right? That might not be in as good of swimming shape. Um, but I don't know if that outdoor pool space would be something we would be able to use. Um, and then the only other thing I can think of is warm-up space, but it's, it's just hard with that pool. Um, but again, if there's outdoor pool space, maybe that's an opportunity that people can have if they choose to warm up, which is probably not that often by the end of the tournament, but maybe on Friday or Saturday, uh, they'll take advantage of it.
Yeah. And then this past year, we did try to keep, once we got past like the first three or four games, it was almost like it was, I hate to say it, this is bad, the loser's bracket was going and playing in the diving well. So we tried to keep those, like the people that were in the bottom half of the brackets in the diving well, everybody else in the other pool. So. Any other thoughts, guys?
Well, actually, I was gonna make the comment that, um, from a development perspective, it's a great opportunity to have such high quality, uh, play in state uh, where we can get our referees down there and actually get exposed, right, without having to travel to California or wherever. Um, it is a great opportunity to get our local refs, you know, some exposure to some higher level play and some higher level refs coming in as well. So, uh, a lot of benefit to the zone overall.
And then I hope we keep kind of working on that. And, you know, there's lots of changes, obviously, after everything goes back to normal. We're gonna have to kind of, we're have to kind of see where everything's at. But, um, I, I just see that just increasing. I see this tournament increasing. I think we can maybe get up to like 32 or 36 teams at some point. And, um, and I'm hoping that like we had 20 men's teams that, I don't know if we need any more than that, but definitely try to get up to like, you know, 12 or 12 or 16, yeah, yeah, women's teams. Because I'm sure Becca remembers kind of way back in, in the day, whenever she was playing youth water polo in Texas, that in order for her team to get a game, they had to go enter a masters, uh, tournament, right, a men's masters tournament, right, as an 18er girls, right? So, yeah, so things have come a little bit. So, um, and talking about that is now kind of, kind of moving away like spin lob kind of starts the year. So it's kind of like the Daytona 500, right? So it starts the year. And then we have, um, then we have a little bit of a lull. Um, we, we used to have a spring tournament that, uh, that Dallas hosted or Thunder hosted. Um, that's, that is, that is no longer. So the next tournament after that was going to be actually a Hops tournament this past April, uh, May, just obviously kind of had to get canceled. Um, so we have the spin lob, then we have the new Hops tournament, and then we, um, do we even have a summer tournament?
T-Shot.
T-Shot.
Are we going to continue that?
Or the Houston summer, Hops is gonna have a summer event, too.
Oh, I think Hops was just gonna do their April, May, and then the fall. And then we end with the Dallas, uh, Dallas Masters, uh, kind of invite, which is hosted by Pegasus in Dallas in November. So right now we have four on the schedule. I don't know if, is the T-Shot on the schedule or off the schedule?
I'm pretty sure it's off the schedule.
So there's probably room to have another tournament kind of out there as far as the summer's concerned. It's just a team has to step up and do it. Um, and right now we have Austin and, or I guess it's more Longhorn that is hosting Spin Lob. We have kind of Hops is going to be doing two Dallas Masters that is hosting the one in November. So there are plenty of pools out there in San Antonio, but there is room during the summer. Any thoughts to the calendar in even, in either more events or less events?
Uh, I don't think anyone's ever going to complain about having too many events.
You would be surprised.
Well, okay. Well, actually, no, you're right. Actually, why am I even saying that? Yes, I'm well aware of people saying there's too many events. I'm going to put my big shout out for, it's just, it's time for Texas to return to Masters Nationals. There's, we should be able to, I mean, Arseni is an assembling team going off to islands in the Caribbean. I'm sure we could make our way to California at some point. Uh, that was, I'm looking at your background. I'm recognizing the theme here. So, uh, I, I think it's time to get, you know, just gather folks together. I mean, we're all pretty much friends. We all know each other. Um, we should be assembling, uh, women's teams with, you know, appropriate age groups and men's the same way. So uh, no excuse for us to haven't been there. I mean, I was like in the first and second Masters Nationals way, way, way back. And I'll admit, I haven't been back since. So bad on me. But, um, we need to make that happen.
I mean, it's, it's not just Masters Nationals kind of necessarily. I mean, I think Arseni, I think you take teams out to one or two different tournaments a year, correct?
Yeah, that's right. You know, and, and I've gone to Masters Nationals and I'll see some Texas players, but we won't have our own team. They'll be like scattered all through other teams. So I, I, I am, uh, confident that it is possible to bring our own team to Masters Nationals.
That is just somebody that wants to send an email and organize.
Yeah.
Haven't the Dallas gone to Masters Nationals many times, Coach Best?
Um, I believe it may be three or I don't think more than three times, three or four times. Um, I know that, uh, we have had individual players, uh, go out as well. But the, the team overall, um, yes, has gone out about three times.
Okay. We have, um, three, uh, women who are in the, in the over 40s, between 40 and 50 category now. So they're pretty into it. They might be wanting to go to Nationals.
If there is a Masters Nationals at some point this fall, I don't know if there's.
2021.
Pushed back a little bit. So, but, um, yeah, 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 definitely. Um, how many people have actually been to Masters Nationals? Gabriel?
I have.
Okay, all right. All right. I mean, it's, it's a good event and I hear the, like, the, like, the social's fun, but I think the socials are always fun at Masters events. So, yeah, kind of whether they're, um, they're part of the tournament or not. So. But, um, yeah, I mean, I just think that if a club wants to do a tournament during the summer, I think there's, it's, there's just find a weekend and we can put it on the calendar and make it happen. And I mean, and I think Hops is hoping that that tournament that happens, um, in the April, May turns into another spin lob. Is that kind of correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's the goal. You know, I've been, uh, uh, we, we had some, uh, promising candidates interested in coming to the, uh, and coming to it before COVID. Uh, but, you know, it didn't work out.
I mean.
We gave up the branch at that pool. We, we tried to get you a date several times. We got them to agree on it twice. Once with Harvey and the second time with COVID. So.
Curse.
You're cursed.
Yes, third time's a charm. Third time's a charm. And then the Dallas tournament in November, I, and I think that's an excellent place to also be another type of, of kind of a, like, a go, like, like a go-to event. Granted, kind of right now, there's a bunch of age group teams in there, but there were a bunch of age group teams at the spin lob, you know, whenever it first started. And then they've kind of been slowly kind of not asked to come. So, but, um, I think that like the SMU location is a great location. It's, uh, it's right there downtown and it's quick and easy. And I mean, it's just getting the word out and getting everybody to come to Texas. And I think people want to come to Texas. So.
Yeah, I think masters are looking for, for a tournament that's in a fun city to have a good time. You know, I think that's one of the reasons the spin lob has been a, a big success. I, you know, I've seen, you know, the Dallas, uh, SMU tournament, like you said, the SMU pool is fantastic. And it's really close to Dallas, too. So I, you know, Joe's had some good teams out there before. I remember he had Navy out there a couple of times. He had some good teams out there. So I think it's definitely possible to do it.
Yeah, well, just for those that don't know, Dallas actually used to host three masters tournaments a year. Uh, fall, summer and, uh, or fall, summer and a spring tournament. So that's now down one. Because they've kind of, a couple of those tournaments kind of turned into age group tournaments, which we'll get to in a couple of minutes, where they turned into age group tournaments. And then eventually, instead of kicking out the age group people, the age group people kicked out the masters people. So, but, um, it's one of those things where, uh, um, yeah, I think there's some room up there. So, um, but now talking about the tournaments, we do have something called the Connor Cup, which is there's points based off of, uh, uh, like just off your placing in the tournaments and your participation. Um, it's awarded each year in the men's and women's division. There's also an age group division, but we, but, but we're not going to talk about that today. Um, the, the Connor Cup's been around since about the mid 2000s. Um, it's gone through some changes in, in some, yeah, some, some revisions here and there. We added the women's division probably in the late 2000s, early 2010s. Um, there's either four or five tournaments a year that kind of, kind of create the points. Um, just kind of, just kind of curious on how your club views the Connor Cup, uh, any possible changes? Just kind of, just kind of throwing it out there.
Yeah, this is Robert. I want to make a particular plea. If you, if anybody, whether you're listening to this or sitting on this panel, have thoughts about it. We're spending some of this downtime right now on the board to look at changes in things like the Connor Cup and such. So now is a great time to get some suggestions up.
And that's, and that's Robert Alback, who's also the Southwood Zone Chair. So he's on the board that, that can actively make changes. But, uh, any thoughts on the Connor Cup, guys? Do you all like it? Do you not like it? Is it just something that's there?
We always use it as a character.
I mean, I just speak for our team. It's a goal for us. And we make sure that then a team in every one of those tournaments. And we're trying to, you know, compete and bring that home. It's actually in my house right now. Um, but, um, one, one question I do have about that, um, is we don't get all the teams to go to all the tournaments. And this isn't, you know, calling anybody out or anything, but I, I don't know you, Ashley, but I know that Dallas, the last couple of years, hasn't come out to Houston. Is there any reason for that? I'm just kind of curious.
I think it's just a lack of momentum, honestly, like an inability to sustain the momentum after the spin lob. Like, we kind of lose a lot of people. Um, there is a lot of interest, though, and it's kind of been building as we've got, gotten more people moving back to Dallas after college. There's a lot of interest in, um, continuing to play tournaments year round instead of just playing spin lob, uh, like some people do. So the interest is there. Um, we just kind of need to actually act on it, you know?
Do you think that the Houston tournament we're trying to do in spring would help with that? Because I think that there's a big lull. I mean, that's true of what Joe was saying about that. But, um, we actually go out to the Texas A&amp;M right after a spin lob. Um, and it's not a great tournament, but it's water polo. But we really kind of have to try and space it out, right, just to get everybody to, to be able to go to these tournaments and maybe not overlap with other things. I know we had an issue with the Hops date on that spring tournament because there was something else. I think it was like a tag or something like that that was at the same time. So just need to be able to offer enough opportunities throughout the year, well enough space apart, or we're not losing people throughout the year.
Yeah, the other tricky part, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go, 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 go.
I was gonna say, the other, uh, tricky part besides sustaining momentum and interest is, um, not overlapping with the youth or rather high school season. A lot of our masters players, especially the ones that are, um, more involved, are also coaching the youth team. So if there's a, you know, a big state tournament or a big youth tournament in the spring, which, as we know, is probably every weekend, um, it's hard to, to get enough people for our, you know, our, our core team to show up to a tournament. Um, because a lot of them are coaching on the weekend. So that's, that's another hurdle, if you will.
And it's, and it's not just the people that are coaching. There are also, um, like the masters players are also kind of, kind of roughing tournaments out there as well. And, um, it's in the conflict with the tags tournament, which is eighth grade and under, by the way. And the, and the masters tournament was not really a conflict of players or coaches, yeah, necessarily. It was more about, do we have enough, oh, referees to cover both events? Because they're both kind of championship events and we want to make sure our best referees get there. So, I mean, but that's, I think we're getting more referees each and every kind of, kind of season. And especially with the addition of the sanctioned high school season coming up here in, in fall of 2021, we're going to get a lot more referees to hopefully, so we can have kind of more than one serious event each, each weekend. And then, you know, and I hope that that's going to allow, you know, teams to attend more often. So. But, but I do think the tournament in April, May is going to help with that lull. And if we can find something in, in the summer, that's going to help a lot, too. But just to let everybody know, we do have a high school season in the spring of, of, uh, 2021. That'll be the last high school season in the spring. Then it's going to be spring of, uh, and then it's be fall of, then it's be fall of 2021 is going to be for the next school year. So it's going to be club stuff only in, you know, in March, April and May. So starting in 2022. Just to let everybody know. That is, that is, that is confusing. So there you are. But any other thoughts on Connor Cup? Yeah, Becca, Tom?
Uh, I was gonna say, it's, it's a pretty good carrot for our guys. Like, it's a reason to show up and go to tournaments. And I'll like write an email to a group about, you know, our standings and everything and kind of make it fun. And that usually gets some motivation. And, um, yeah, I mean, it's better than just randomly going to a tournament every couple of months. So.
And that, and that was the whole purpose of the Connor Cup in the first place was to create a little bit more consistency for the teams to kind of, kind of, kind of enter the various events. So that's a great question, Louise.
For, oh, just for our women's team, I never fully understood the Connor Cup, so I never explained it to my teammates, so they didn't really know about it. But then when we did find out about it, there was one year when we thought we should have won it. Um, but I think Joe and Robert, you guys remember better what happened because I, I just remember we had a situation. And it was to do with participation or something.
Yeah, so there's, there's multiple. Yeah, so there's, there's multiple components. It's, Connor Cup isn't necessarily just who can assemble the best squad. And actually, we purposely made sure it wasn't just a who can assemble the best squad. Um, it was to some extent, who's actually growing water polo in some extent, right? So the fact that, you know, hey, maybe you don't have the best team, but on the other hand, you've got enough people to field two teams. So you got, you know, points out of that. So we, we definitely wanted to have some balance between the quality of play and what's being brought to the tournaments and recognize, you know, excellence in that area. But at the same time, we could have done that and not had any Texas players. And so that's what we really wanted to make sure is that in some ways we're rewarding growth of the sport.
And also there's the participation points. So if you have, uh, two teams, you get a couple of extra points and that, and that can add up over a number of tournaments over the year as well. So.
Yeah, I do have a point on that. So a lot of teams will sweep through another club. Like, for example, TOTEX and Longhorn are now the same thing. I mean, they used to be two different things, but they both go into Longhorn Aquatics or go through TOTEX and they both get participation points. Our club teams here in town, like Southside, Bifidget, those guys, they're a separate entity. And like, a lot of times, like, when you have these clubs competing in masters, then you have all these extra participation points. And it's not necessarily that you're growing the sport, it's just that it's being entered a different way. So I don't know if, I don't know if there's a fix to this necessarily, but I just think that that, you know, we're at a disadvantage because the clubs in our area are well put together, I guess. I don't know how to say that another way, but, um, we're not able to get those participation points and we're only masters. So we don't have any eighteen-under kids come out at all. So it's not like we have a, an opportunity that way. So, I mean, a lot of us coach, but they're a separate entity. I mean, does that, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, I, I think right now, like, those issues are going to be, um, probably primarily with Longhorn Aquatics. That is, that has both masters and, uh, and, and youth and probably Pegasus. That is going to have both masters and youth as well. So. But, I mean, I don't, I don't see an easy solution, so.
We also have the UT guys, uh, that play with us. Um, my thoughts on that was we all practice at the same time with each other at the same pool. So we're kind of all practicing together as one club. And then we, um, you know, compete as our UT team or our TOTEX team or whatever. But, um, it's not like we're from all over the city and we all just play under the same club.
Uh, I don't think it's maliciously or anything like that. I just think that it just, it works a little bit differently when we have, like, clubs that way. But, um, we, we were asked specifically not to allow youth players to come out to, to play with us. So, you know, we don't have that opportunity, but, um, it, it's never really made, it's never tipped the scales, I don't think, in, in any Connor Cup standings. But it does have the potential to do so. So that's just kind of one thing I, I wanted to bring up.
And I just mentioned.
Yeah, I just, I just want to be real, real clear. This can only go to actually, like, USA Water Polo Clubs. So I don't know the last time there was actually TOTEX won it versus, say, Longhorn Aquatics or actually West Houston.
Yeah, no, TOTEX as a club never won it. I don't think they, we even measured them as a USA Water Polo team.
Yeah. And I just mentioned Pegasus. Um, they also, all their kids that play also play with the masters guys. So, so, so they're in a very kind of similar situation as Longhorn Aquatics as well. Is that kind of correct, Ashley?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. But that's, but.
Maybe it's worth considering, like, two divisions of the Connor Cup, like, uh, something that includes participation and then something that's based purely on one specific team's result. I don't know if that would kind of water down, you know, the reward of, like, earning the Connor Cup, but.
I, I would love to believe that we have so many participants that we could field the two groups. I, I don't think that's the case right now. Now, I will make mention, uh, we purposely created a second award, which is actually Club of the Year. And that has a combination of performance in the pool and then additionally things that the club does. So as an example, did you sponsor new referees? Did you go off and, like, sponsor new referees or did you sponsor new, uh, clubs? You know, did you help form like a, a new club somewhere or something like that? These are all the things that are more focused on sport growth per se, but there is an element of, well, by the way, how well did you do in the competitions as well? And did you go to Masters Nationals? Did you go to these other types of events? So we, I mean, okay, so this is my, my, not say evil zone chair thing, but we're trying to grow the sport. So whatever we can do through recognition that will actually expand and help everybody is, is, uh, is a big goal here.
Right, we have a question, we have a question from the group. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and allow Austin Oliver to ask his question.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Austin.
Hey.
Austin.
Hey, how's it going?
There's one good-looking kid in that picture.
It's more of a comment, but I remember back with the Houston Summer Open or the Houston Fall Open or whatever we called it last year. It wasn't out of, like, any, it wasn't malicious or anything, but, uh, we had A&amp;M and, uh, Rice that wanted to play in our tournament. Obviously, they're CWPA clubs and, and sorry if you get some Brooklyn feedback, but, uh, uh, we had to enter them. Obviously, they weren't USA Water Polo registered as clubs. We had to, we basically entered them just to get them u- under USA Water Polo. They, all their members that were on their roster had to register with Hops. And we made them like Hops B and Hops C. And then, like, on the side, it ended up, we weren't expecting Rice and A&amp;M to do as well. But Rice ended up getting, like, second place in the tournament and ended up getting more Connor Cups for Hops, more, more Connor Cups points for Hops than what we were expecting. So that was kind of a, an unwarranted, we weren't really expecting. We could just kind of did it out of courtesy because they didn't have, we want them to have to register their entire club as a USA Water Polo club just to play in this one tournament. So we entered them as like Hops B and Hops C. And it ended up, they did better than Hops did that year. And they ended up, uh, unnecessarily getting us points that we didn't really earn. But I don't know if there's a way to really fix that, but I, just a comment, it's, it's happened that way a few times where we've had some college clubs that wanted to play and we kind of got around their USA Water Polo and they scored Connor Cup points, uh, on the side.
I, I don't think Hops is unique in that situation.
Yeah, probably not.
Yeah. So Gabriel, I think you had, I apologize if I cut you off there. Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Austin.
Um, I want to piggyback off of what, uh, Becca was, was, uh, alluding to. Um, and, um, and also Luis made a couple of comments. I think our situation, uh, falls in the middle of the two, perhaps, um, in that, uh, we see ourselves competing more so against, um, apples and we're oranges. Yeah, you know, we are, we are a pure masters club. We don't have a, a youth club. I would like to be able to, to have a, uh, uh, some type of reward system or incentive where a pure masters club, um, uh, would, would, would be, you know, would be competitive. Um, and the reason I say apples and oranges is because when you're talking about adults, you know, the thirty, forty, fifty years of age with other responsibilities is quite different, uh, than, you know, taking a youth, uh, uh, group out to compete. And I'd rather compete against individuals of that same age group in regards to scheduling and, you know, setting up a time in advance to be at a particular tournament, uh, to, uh, grow the team. All those things that are part of the, uh, Connor Cup, I think are valid. They're good, uh, incentives, uh, uh, or goals, I should say. But I think that, um, um, I would rather see it separated out where you have one for the, for the youth and you have one for the pure masters, uh, that do not have any youth participating necessarily with, with them. Uh, and I would say eighteen and above, you know, would, would fall into that category for that calendar year. Um, that's, that, that's, that's, I am conveying a thought that, uh, would be coming from my team, uh, as a pure masters club.
Okay, I do, I do appreciate the, yeah, the conversation about it. Um, Robert, again, is the Southwest Zone Chair, so he's probably going to bring this back and discuss this with the Zone Board and they'll make changes accordingly as needed. And I appreciate.
Yeah, I just, I just note, guys, um, ralback@usawaterpolo.org for all your comments and thoughts and suggestions, as well as what you've said here, Gabriel. Go ahead, please.
Yes, uh, another, just another quick comment. Um, when we're talking about the tournaments, I know that we're going into this UIL season coming up and whatnot and will need to be, uh, collaborating and, and coordinating with, uh, uh, all of the other, um, uh, aquatics, uh, events that are taking place on a calendar to make sure things go, um, seamlessly in what, in what we're trying to accomplish. And that would be great. Um, I would suggest as well, if possible, consider that whenever you're having a youth tournament, uh, just to, um, we've done this in the past, just to provide some space so that, uh, masters can compete as well. So if I have, uh, individuals who are coaching youth and going to a particular tournament and they have a masters tournament at that same tournament, it's not a masters tournament, but an opportunity to play against another masters team or a couple of other masters team. It doesn't have to be ten, twenty teams, but perhaps, uh, three or five teams you could play against, uh, within, within that particular, uh, tournament that's heavily, uh, a youth tournament. That would be great. It'd give us more opportunities to play throughout the year.
And, and I think that some clubs do that. Um, I do know a couple of years ago, we purposely got away from that. And the, and the, and the reason being was the explosion of, of the youth water polo has, uh, like, it, there were so many teams that wanted to enter that they ran out of pool time. So they were telling teams to stay home. So then the thought was, okay, well, let's separate the masters from this tournament. And then they would have their own tournament like the weekend before. And that was good and bad. I, I think that's, that's kind of, that's kind of, kind of what we tried to do with the tee shot tournament during the summer. Um, and, um, there's been some good parts and some bad parts. We've been successful with that with the Dallas Fall Invite that is hosted by Thunder, the first weekend of November, then the Dallas Masters Fall Invite, which happens a couple of weeks after. So, um, and that's really worked out good, that, yeah, that split of the event. So it's just, it's one of those things where the, the youth, they, there are, they are running out of space at their tournaments. And they're in, they already have like three, four or five courses going. And that's like three courses kind of, kind of just in one fifty-meter pool, which is a lot. So, um, that's, that's just a challenge there, so.
And that's a good problem to have, by the way.
And now, and now that kind of takes us, you know, i- i- in our next question is, I mean, about ten years ago or ten plus years ago, we had, we had one club that brought eight teams out to, out, out to J.O.'s. This, in the summer of two thousand nineteen, we had twelve clubs that brought forty-five-plus teams out to J.O.'s, just, yeah, kind of, just for the Southwest Zone. Um, along with that, we've had a ton more tournaments. And I talked about Becca. And the only time that they had that Becca could play in an event was a masters event. There were only five events a year at, at that time. Now we have something every weekend, every other weekend. Um, has the growth of youth water polo kind of hurt the masters? Or helped? Or thoughts on that? Just, I'm opening up to a group.
I feel like this might be, uh, Robert has the most insight here because he was here. If there was a glory days of, like, masters water polo in Texas, you know, because we've only been playing for the past, I don't know, ten or fifteen years as masters players. Um, and I haven't really noticed a big shift in, oh, there used to be ten masters teams. There was two in each city and everybody, you know, like, there was always just the Dallas team, Hops, San Antonio and Austin, and that kind of transition to TOTEX, you know, once the Austin guys, uh, you know, evolved to just staying home and playing on Saturdays instead of going to tournaments. But, uh, yeah, like, I, I feel like it's, from my perspective, from when I first started playing, you know, graduating college in oh seven, like, it's the same teams, really, you know? They're still here, same amount of tournaments.
Although I think we have more teams, actually, and then the Spin Lob has just grown by leaps and bounds over the last ten years, so.
Well, that's, that's been mostly out-of-state teams, which is cool, which we like, you know? We're not playing five different high school teams. That's all out-of-state teams.
Any other thoughts?
And it seems like the amount of masters tournaments is, is decreased in Texas. Like, you know, we talked about, uh, what, this year or last year, we had maybe, what, four Connor Cup tournaments? I remember we had, uh, we had the Spin Lob followed by a tournament in Dallas, followed by a San Antonio tournament, followed by a Houston tournament, followed by a Dallas tournament, followed by, you know, I think we had five or six back then.
Yeah. And that's only, and that, and that's been in the last five or six years. So whenever we try to make that transition to kind of separate the youth and masters events, um, I do know in the, in the spring, uh, Thunder took over the youth event and then they, and then Dallas tried to have their own tournament, just didn't go all that well a- at the time. And, um, and then during the summer, uh, you know, ki- kind of Thunder took over the youth event and then the tee shot kind of happened one year and there were some issues there. But, um, but I do believe that, you know, um, Hops kind of putting back an event in April and May is going to be, is going to help with that. Um, and I do think that there is room, again, I have already said it, that during the summer, there is room for somebody to host an event, so.
Yeah, I'm, I, I wonder if a masters tournament is economically viable without external teams or youth teams.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, I'd love to, I'd love to have, I mean, I, I'm looking, I'll just tell you guys some numbers. We have two hundred, uh, on paper at least, we currently have, um, close to four hundred US Water Polo members above age twenty. I don't know I could say we've got half that many regularly playing. You know, because we had two hundred people who played norm regularly. That's, that's a pretty good number of squads. Um, but I'm not seeing that, so, um, I, I think the challenge is primarily economic here. It's like, yeah, could we, could someone really float a more than one-day event with just in-state, uh, masters age players? I mean, I want to be wrong.
I think that, I, I think the H-Town, uh, tournament did that last in two thousand nineteen. And I think the Dallas Masters Fall kind of invite, yeah, does that as well. Granted, they might use some youth teams to help kind of, kind of supplement, but to get it going, they might, yeah, they might need them, but eventually they may kind of phase out the youth teams, so. Just like the.
We could actually do that and it's something that Hops, that the club has been working on for a bit, actually. Um, we're trying to have the membership of our club be bigger so we can send two teams instead of one. Uh, we've looked at opportunities like, like for San Antonio, for example, we'll give them some players that we have. Too many people for one team for a tournament or something like that. Um, the way that we're able to do that, the way that, you know, especially the tournament didn't happen, was going to happen was, uh, we're using college clubs and college clubs cannot play, uh, minors. So they have to be a separate group. I mean, we could have the tournament where it's a separate division. It's like only eighteen-plus and then, uh, minors and, and that kind of works that way. But, um, that's really the only way that we're able to do that. Um, I think that there's enough players in the eastern area probably to have two clubs, um, just based on the people that I've seen around Hops and that I know still live in the city. Just being able to, you know, keep them around and give them enough opportunities to play. But, um, I don't know if every club in the state of Texas is having that same issue or if, if, you know, you're having, um, you know, people, you're turning people away. I mean, we turn people away from our club at times just based on skills and things like that. But we had more opportunity to learn, you know, if San Antonio or something were, were a lot closer to us. I mean, I think that there'd be more people developing skills and being able to play masters in the long term.
Our challenge has been the finance. Um, you hit the nail on the head. Um, without, um, support from, from, from our youth, um, we would not be able to afford the, um, uh, the tournament itself. We put the numbers together. We sat down, talked about it, and, uh, that's what it boiled down to. We just needed more teams to be able to, uh, to do that sort of thing. And we're hoping, um, that, uh, as we go forward with the UIL and everything else, now we have a, um, a feeder program, uh, set up in San Antonio that, that would, uh, open up, uh, more teams or more players coming out and, and becoming part of the, of the masters teams here in San Antonio. And that we would be able to host, uh, a few tournaments here in San Antonio. We have pools. Um, and, um, and we would love to have people come over and, and, uh, play some tournaments here as well. Oh, another com- quick comment. Uh, this is just giving you some feedback, okay? Um, we have enjoyed going to Dallas, uh, going to Houston, going to Austin, uh, playing in the, uh, in the, the league games or the, uh, or the league tournament, um, that started up a couple of years ago. Um, Tom, uh, you know what I'm talking about there. And those are affordable. Um, the only setback, uh, the only. The only setback, or the only negative feedback that I've gotten within the last year or so is that the team overall felt that we were always traveling, and no one was, and we were not bringing people to San Antonio. And so they got a little bit of exhaustion in traveling, traveling, and decided that they wanted to stay home, stay local, or go to one of the islands. Well, that didn't happen either.
Hey Gabriel, I do think there's going to be a lot more stuff happening in San Antonio here in the near future, or once we get back going. So I will help you do that. So, that sound good?
We're happy to go, too. I mean, we went to a game day for you guys. It's just, I don't know about everyone kind of signing up for that stuff, but we would love to go to San Antonio, whenever that can happen.
To jump on the finance part, like, the only reason Spin Lob actually breaks even is that we charge so much money. The only reason we charge so much, we can charge so much money is because we get all, you know, the good teams there. So it's kind of like a chicken and an egg thing, because, you know, we, for the first several years, we were definitely in the red, and we had to go to the pool administrators and be like, hey, can you help us out? And so eventually, like, we, and that allowed us to build the name up and get those good teams there, and then we could charge that much money. But if you're not doing that, I don't really see how you're going to break even on like a full two-day tournament with like that many, that much pool space used. So maybe there is something to like, and this kind of hits a thought that I was, I had about, like, most masters players are not training to come to, you know, play five games in less than 24 hours. And that's not really why most of them are going to tournaments anyway. They want to go somewhere, play a couple of games on Saturday, go out, and then maybe play one game on Sunday. So maybe if we just, you know, rent the pool for half as much time, and then you're only playing good games, you know, three good games instead of a couple throwaway games against a high school team, whatever other filler, you need to make the money to make it viable. That could, you know, that's something we could look into, maybe. You know, like a Saturday afternoon, starting at like 2:00 or something, and then you're done by Sunday at like 11:00 or noon or something like that. That's just something I was thinking about.
Yeah, I think, I think league type games and scrimmages, I know we were looking to have a scrimmage with Austin College in September. Even, you know, not full-blown tournaments, things like that, I think will definitely help sustain the momentum, at least on our end. Because the desire is there, but then if there's not at least a scrimmage or something where you have an opportunity to embarrass yourself, then, you know, people aren't going to show up. So, yeah, I think that's something we would definitely be interested in.
And I do know that we, I used to host a lot of the masters events, and we used to try to make sure that the masters guys got five games. We made that switch to four games, and all the masters people were happy. So, I mean, they were definitely happy. So, and it's just, we do have a little, we do have a little bit of a distance issue sometimes between Houston and San Antonio. I mean, are people willing to drive that long for just two, three games? But it sounds like it might be doable. So that's like, you know, between these big tournaments that we have, we can definitely do these type of things, and maybe even kind of create a league type thing out of it. So, I appreciate the feedback there. And we have, Austin Oliver has another question, so I'm going to, I'm going to allow him to talk. So, Austin, you there?
I'm here. Hey, Kristen also has a question, but one comment about the economic feasibility of tournaments. And Luis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the spring tournament that hypothetically Hops was planning on doing with U of H, they were going to co-host it with U of H, and that was partially going to drive down pool rental costs, I believe, right? I think that was the plan. They were going to get the pool for a lot cheaper because they were able to co-host it with University of Houston, and they were going to write it off as their own club event, and that was going to save them quite a bit of money. And everybody might have their own different, they may not have that situation available to them, but something to at least ask the question if you're looking to host some more tournaments. Maybe look to co-host it with a college club that's, I mean, even if a Dallas team goes to A&amp;M and hosts a tournament, maybe they can co-host with A&amp;M, something like that could help save a little bit of money. I think they were going to get the pool for like, very large reduction in costs. So, something to look at if you're worried about costs. And again, it might not be a thing that's available to you in the city that you're in, but.
Yeah, the referee costs are not going to go down, they're going to go up. The pool cost can go down, so.
Yeah, but I think the Hops guys were excited because they were going to save on the pool rental costs, and they were going to try to fly in a couple of out-of-state referees to get some new fresh blood as referees, because they could afford it, because they saved money on the pool rental. So, I'll pass to Kristen, she has a question, too. Sorry.
This is actually on a different subject, and it's for Becca. Becca, how did y'all grow the women's masters program in your area? Because it's like pulling teeth trying to get women to play for masters in Houston.
Yeah, I don't even know.
It was kind of, it was a little bit of luck. There just happened to be, like Becca mentioned, three or four ladies that all came in at the same time. They were all like really enthusiastic, got along with each other, and, you know, were just up for, you know, and they kind of used that as their core, and they built around that. And so when somebody new comes in, they're like, oh, these girls are all nice and fun to hang out with, and they know what they're doing, and so it's easier for people to stick. That's what I've noticed.
Yeah, and I think the core of us, like, we're all just really good friends, like, we hang out anyway, and then we're just the core that kind of keeps everybody together. And also, the core doesn't have kids yet, so that makes it easier. I know that other women's teams, there's more moms. We do have a couple moms now, which is exciting. But, yeah, it's easier for, you know, families with no kids to come play at 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Tuesday and Thursday.
And do you get, like, specific pool time just for the women as well? Because I can see that being a driving factor is keeping more women in the sport if they're kind of practicing with each other rather than with the men's team as well.
Yeah, that's been really big. So on Mondays or Tuesdays, we have a women's scrimmage, and it's masters, UT women, and high school girls. And that's been huge. That's kept a lot of people coming back, especially if they're a little bit newer and they don't feel comfortable playing with women. So, yeah, that's been a big factor for retention, I think.
And do you, and sorry, last question. Do you get a discount with like the pool rentals, just because you're going through, are you going through Totex with pool rentals, or are you just a separate entity?
Through Longhorn or?
Or Longhorn, yeah.
I'm probably into that.
Yeah, it's all through Longhorn. And so that's, and they're technically the only people that can host events at UT, except for like UIL State, you know, and NCAA, that kind of stuff. So, yeah, that's why we had to make everybody sign up for Longhorn, even when they were playing us Totex or Wahoo's or anything like that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Hey Kristen, join the board, and we can maybe get some women to come regularly.
I will be back in polo once the second kid's here.
Yeah, she's having another kid here in two months, Luis.
I am biting at the bit. I'm dying right now without polo.
That's something that we're trying to do as well. I know you haven't been with us on the board for a little bit, but it just seems like, I mean, it's a bunch of guys. I mean, it's just five of us guys trying to get women to come play water polo. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I think we do need female organization on our board, and I've made that point. And it's a democratic process, and obviously they haven't got to vote. I would be all for that. It is a big area of opportunity that we're not really tapping into.
Yeah, sign me up.
I'll make, I'll like a comment on that area. I mean, we've had a lot of women move into Austin, say, from California outside who played water polo. I believe the retention rate is much easier when I can direct them to Becca and say, here is a woman for you to go talk to, rather than me, you know. And I think that just makes a big difference. So, you know, whatever the club is, just you point and say, this is a women's specific group, and I think that just makes a huge difference.
Hey Ashley, like, Ashley, have you had, so what are some of the challenges for the women up in Dallas? Kind of, because you mentioned that there used to be like a larger core group.
Yeah, I think at one point there was interest, and some of them maybe were frustrated and wanted to have women-only practices. We kind of phased out of that, that there's maybe four of us at best, maybe at one point in the year, pre-Spin Lob, let's say, that are all training, and two of them also referee. So, you know, their time is split, and then the rest of us coach. So that's a little tricky, but I would say we don't really have enough women to have our own practice. But at least in my experience compared to other masters men's clubs, I've had a really pleasant experience with the Dallas Masters Men's Club, which, you know, maybe back in Florida, I might not have said the same thing. So I feel like, you know, it's worked well for us, having a combined practice, at least until maybe we get lucky and a few more girls happen to move here. But I think luck is also part of it, right? Where people moving, people that happen to have played water polo and also want to actually keep playing. So, just kind of depends, I think.
So Longhorn has got like a hybrid group, right? You've got pure masters with the UT women, and then high school girls, creating enough numbers to justify a women's event, right? I'm wondering if in your area, you could hybridize, I don't know if SMU's got a women's team, or if you guys could merge up with some high school teams. And of course, the question, I guess, then becomes, you're a youth coach. How would you feel about your youth girls practicing with masters and such? And I'm just wondering if that hybrid model gets you to that number of viable quantity?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good, it's a good, I think, it's a good thought. I would say we're not there yet, but that was actually crossing my mind after I made that comment, was I think in a few years, we will be there. We're just kind of starting to see that pipeline of female youth players grow. And we took a team, my teammate Molly McBee and I, we took a girls' team, got maybe second to last. But we took a team to J.O.'s last year, all girls, first, you know, first all-girls team competing in J.O.'s from our area. So it's exciting, but, you know, there's still a few more years to go, I would say. But we are starting to see a couple of, you know, 12, 13, 14-year-old players that are really developing. So I think that will be something in our future.
And I wonder, like, for Hops, you guys have got like rice women at a club?
I don't know if I've seen any rice women in our club. Austin, Kristen, what do you want?
So I've had, I've had a lot of success with reaching out to different college athletes and other players I know live in the Houston area for like specific tournaments. But I know for practices, it's not only, I think some get intimidated by practicing with the guys. And then there's other instances where they just feel like maybe they're not getting to pass the ball, or whatever the case may be. I've never had that experience. I've had a great experience with practicing with Hops, just men and women. But we had the same situation where there's, and again, I can't speak to it because I haven't been in the water for a while now, but where there was consistently like three, the same three or four women at those practices. And then about a month or two before a tournament would come up, I would reach out to anyone and everyone I knew in the area. And in most tournaments, or in most cases, I was able to get a team together. But again, it was just four tournaments. It wasn't a consistent number of women coming to those practices.
It was also just one of those things where we have had a large growth of the youth water polo. Those girls are going to turn into college athletes, and then they're going to come back. So it's going to happen. It's just, I mean, I'm just happy to hear that all of the clubs are kind of welcoming women. They have teams if possible, and that I'm glad that people are having some good positive experiences there. And Ashley, we've all been there for the second to last. At least you got second to last. So you won that last game, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. No, they really, yeah, no, they're coming a long way. You know, with COVID, it's definitely a bummer, because a lot of our kids were just like at the start of their water polo journey. But, you know, hopefully, hopefully we'll get that time back soon.
Guys, I do appreciate, is there anything else that you guys would like to talk about? I know it's been almost an hour and a half.
On the women and masters, I think you're right. I mean, there's going to be people going off to college and coming back. I just think that there's probably something we need to address as a club, and I'm just talking about Hops specifically, because our retention is really bad. I mean, I know that I've seen probably 25, 30 women come through our club, and we probably have like seven or eight that come regularly. And I don't know what it is that we need to do to fix that, but I think we probably need to address what that is, and that's why I was kind of hoping to have Kristen back so that, you know, we could do something different to maybe fix that.
Yeah, it's tough, like, I'm thinking just of how the practice attendance really varies between the men and women, and we're usually all practicing at the same time. And so luckily, we're married, and we can make a plan like ahead of time, like, hey, if there's going to be a ton of men, like, I need you to go have your own women's scrimmage. And like, we've just kind of come to an agreement about how we're going to handle certain situations so that there's not like heated arguments on the pool deck and people getting their feelings hurt. So we kind of have some backup plans if there's too many people, or if there's too little people. And we just have to be able to make those decisions on the fly and kind of soothe people when they like, because we do have, you know, masters players who will get upset. And we just have to kind of manage that. So teamwork.
This would be an example of us like benefiting from the youth water polo, because that kind of gives us a flexibility to throw them in there as needed to either make a scrimmage, like another one if needed, or, you know, if we don't need them, then they can go, you know, do whatever they're supposed to be doing anyway, drill wise.
I do think you're on the right track of getting, like, you know, kind of somebody like Kristen, but probably somebody that's probably in their, right out of college, and not married, and no kids yet, and put them in charge, and say, you're going to be kind of leading the way, and that's.
Wow, Joe, wow.
Something birthday a couple?
Really, because this hypothetical woman has more time on her hands.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Gabriel, I think you had something.
Yes, we have a history here with women coming and going and trying to decide what's going to work out best. At one point, we had all women and women practices only, a separate men's practice. We had men who would come and see our teams, and because it was predominantly women, they would not stay. They would seek out a men's team, which we have one locally. And so we've had that issue. What I can say is this, what seems to work is when relationships form. At the 30-year-old group, at the 50-year-old group, they tend to come out in groupings. You know, the younger, the women, then that was our issue, trying to hold on to the youth, the 20-year-olds, the 25-year-olds, because we really didn't have a lot. And so if we have two or three come out, they'll look around, and they felt like they were playing with older women, very skilled older women, but they just didn't feel as though they had someone they could be in a relationship with, and therefore they moved on. And that's what, that's what's been our experience anyway. And the other thing that happened to us as well was that I had a lot of clamoring, a lot of pressure on me to build a 50 and older group. They wanted, I had some women that were playing, and they really just wanted to play with other individuals who were 50 and older. And some of my other women started aging up, and they said, well, let's make it 45 and over, you know, that sort of thing. And so those are the issues that we have. But I think the one way to grow a women's team is for, is for them to build relationship, and it will grow.
For sure. I think my women's team, we value our relationship over winning tournaments, and I see that as a difference between, well, I don't know, maybe that's a little harsh. There is a difference between men and women, and it's not the same across all women's teams, absolutely. But for my, I just know for my team, we. But for my, I just know for my team, we um, yeah, we really value like the social after the practice, like having brunch and having a happy hour one day a week or something like that to us is equally as important as the tournaments that we go to. And so making an effort on like keeping up those events has been really helpful for retaining our members.
Guys, I, I think this has been a great discussion. We're going on an hour and a half now and I do appreciate everybody's time. Is there anything else that anybody would like to discuss? Well, well, Hops guys, just uh, yeah, just tell Nick that he was missed. I do appreciate it. Okay. And um, I appreciate the time, guys. This is going to be posted to txwaterpole.com. And uh, next week, we're going to have another diversity town hall meeting. So I appreciate it. And Austin and Kristen in Brooklyn, thanks. Yeah, just thanks for joining us as well.
Oh yeah, you're welcome. Hey, tell, Nick now does not have a right to complain about anything Masters related for a full year because he didn't make it to the town hall. That's the new rule. Sorry, no emails, no text messages, no phone calls to us. He's cut off. He didn't make the, the town hall.